I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the city of Springdale for December 3rd, 2025. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Browder, if you could take your role?
Mr. Gleaves?
Present.
Mr. Jacobs?
Present.
Mr. Hall?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson?
Present.
Mrs. Webster?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present. All right, moving right along. Next on our agenda is the minutes for November 19th, council, and your package to receive the minutes for November 19th. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt. Second.
All right, moved in second. Questions, discussions, or changes? And for the new council members, feel free to abstain, but that's your choice. All right? All those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved by acclamation. All right, next up, we have communications. Ms. Browder, are there any communications for council this evening?
No communications, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason, simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address council on any topic you would like. At this point, the floor is now open for communications from the audience. Second call? Third and final call. All right, we're closing the floor for communications from the audience, and we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have ordinance number 47-2025. This is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 47-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated for professional accounting services for the audit of the city of Springdale for the years ending 2025 through 2029. Whereas the office of the Ohio Auditor of State, the auditor issued a request for proposal for professional accounting services for the audit of the city of Springdale, the city, to include the Springdale Health Department for the years ending 2025 through 2029, and whereas Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated submitted a proposal for engagement services to complete a financial audit for the city to include the Springdale Health Department with the following professional fees and expenses: year-end 2025, $27,100; year-end 2026, $27,100; year-end 2027, $27,100; year-end 2028, $27,100; year-end 2029, $27,100; contract total, $135,500. Whereas the Ohio Auditor of State, in consultation with the city, has determined that Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated has submitted the proposal most beneficial to the auditor and the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, the proposal of Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated, as chosen by the office of the Ohio Auditor of State, in the amount of $135,500 for professional accounting services for the audit of the city of Springdale to include the Springdale Health Department for the years ending 2025 through 2029, is hereby accepted. Section two, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute a memorandum of agreement with Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated for professional accounting services for the audit of the city of Springdale to include the Springdale Health Department for the years ending 2025 through 2029. The agreement, a copy of the agreement is attached as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section three, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to play, to pay Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated in amount not to exceed $135,500 for professional accounting services for the audit of the city of Springdale to include the Springdale Health Department for the years ending 2025 through 2029, as outlined in the agreement. Section four, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, this was the first reading of ordinance number 47-2025. Any discussion or questions this evening? All right, seeing none, we will have that at our next meeting. All right, next up, we have ordinance number 48-2025. This is a first reading, but does have the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 48-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of snow and ice control rock salt and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city, needs to purchase rock salt to use to treat city roads during cold weather incidents, and whereas the city participated in a joint bidding process with the city of Cincinnati to purchase rock salt in an amount totaling 1,500 tons, and whereas, as a result of the joint bidding process, it has been determined that the lowest and best bid was submitted by Morton Salt Incorporated for the bulk purchase of rock salt. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, the city of Springdale determines that the lowest and best bid for the purchase of bulk rock salt was submitted by Morton Salt Incorporated, and the mayor and city administrator are authorized to enter into an agreement for the purchase of rock salt consistent with the specifications and purchase requirements submitted by the city as part of the bidding process. Section two, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to pay Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of 1,500 tons of rock salt consistent with the bid price. Section three, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section five, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the charter, be effective immediately. The reason for the declaration of emergency is the need to be able to purchase the rock salt at the earliest possible date. It is needed in order to treat roads and bridges within the city to ensure safe travel.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 48-2025. It does have the emergency clause and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt. Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? Well, I know, I'll say, I certainly appreciate public works using as much salt as they did the other night. They did an excellent job. The city's roads look great. A number of people came out, reached out, Facebook comments, all very positive. So, thank you for the work that they do. All right, I don't see any of their lights, so Ms. Browder, if you poll council?
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 48-2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right. Next, we have ordinance number 49-2025. This is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 49-2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 69-2024 to provide for wage increases for certain city employees. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city, periodically adjusts compensation paid to city employees, and whereas ordinance 69-2024 is the most recent ordinance which established compensation rates for certain city employees, and whereas the city seeks to amend the most recent wage ordinance to make adjustments to the compensation of certain city employees. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, that ordinance number 69-2024 is hereby amended to reflect wage increases for certain city employees as set forth in the attached exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference. Section two, the revised compensation to be paid to city employees contained in the attached exhibit A shall be effective December 28th, 2025. Section three, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the earliest time allowed by law.
Council, this was the first reading of ordinance number 49-2025. Any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, we will see this again. All right, next, we have ordinance number 50-2025. This is also a first reading. Mr. Jacobs?
Ordinance number 50-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local Number 4027. Whereas the city of Springdale, city, and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 4027, are parties to a collective bargaining agreement that covers wages, hours, and other conditions of employment for members of the bargaining unit, and whereas the city and IAFF Local 4027 have engaged in discussions and reached mutual understanding on certain matters to clarify, interpret, or modify existing terms within the current collective bargaining agreement, and whereas the city council finds it to be in the best interest of the city and its residents to formalize these understandings in a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the city and IAFF Local Number 4027. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 4027, in substantially the same form as approved by the city law director, to clarify, supplement, or modify terms of the current collective bargaining agreement as mutually agreed upon by the parties. Section two, the mayor and city administrator are hereby further authorized to execute any and all documents and to take all necessary actions to carry out the terms, spirit, and intent of the memorandum of understanding negotiated by the parties. Section three, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number 50-2025. Just one note before I open for discussion. Just note in your copies on the agenda, in case you hadn't seen, it listed Local 4127 instead of the correct number of 4027. It's simply a Scribner's error. We don't need to take any action to adjust it. We'll have a corrected copy on the agenda at our next meeting, but in case you're following along, that's why the numbers were different. All right, at this point, are there any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, now onto resolutions. Next up is resolution number R-20-2025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution number R-20-2025, a resolution of the city of Springdale, Ohio, supporting action to be taken by the Ohio Legislature to address and limit over occupancy in single-family zone neighborhoods and removing regulations preventing enforcement of local zoning code for owner-occupied and commercially managed rental homes. Whereas the Ohio Legislature and the governor need to take action to address a growing problem within local communities whereby commercial rental agencies are purchasing single-family zone properties to use for commercial rental properties while at the same time restricting enforcement of local zoning code related to occupancy limits, and whereas the charter cities like Springdale and similar jurisdictions have the right to enact local zoning codes, which grants municipalities the authority to create land use regulations for public health, safety, and welfare, and whereas the Ohio Legislature recently passed legislation to address owner occupancy credits, including House Bill 186, to increase the owner occupancy credit and phase out the non-business credit for most properties over the next four years, directing property tax relief primarily to primary residences, which encourages owner-occupied residential property, and whereas local jurisdictions incur higher costs and have higher incidence of public health, welfare, and public safety calls for service when occupancy in residential neighborhoods where occupancy exceeds the home and surrounding street designs, and whereas local jurisdictions are unable to effectively enforce existing zoning requirements related to occupancy limits, zoning and safety requirements due to state and federal regulations that limit the ability of local governments, which require renters to register with the local taxing authority to enforce their codes and conduct inspections of rental properties to ensure compliance with the regulations, and whereas ensuring that commercial rental properties located within single-family neighborhoods are maintained creates a burden on local governments as they seek to ensure these properties are cared for and maintained consistent with local property maintenance, zoning, and building requirements in other similarly situated communities across the state of Ohio that needs to be addressed. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, that the council hereby asks that the Ohio Legislature and the governor take action to study and address the growing problem within local communities across the state of Ohio whereby commercial rental agencies are purchasing single-family zone properties to use for commercial rental properties while preventing local jurisdictions from creating related zoning requirements for these business ventures which exist aside owner-occupied homes in residential districts. Section two, that the city administrators hereby directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to the governor and the city's state legislative delegation to make them aware of this growing problem in the city and across the state of Ohio. Section three, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, that this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R-20-25. It can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? And let me just lead off to give some background, especially for our new members. This was, if you're following along, at the end of our last council sessions. This was a resolution that was brought forward by the rental program committee in response to challenges that we incurred and have seen around the city related to rental inspections, but also just over occupancy came up. It is an item that the current zoning code revision committee is looking at as well, but a number of the things that they're going to run up against are really restricted by state and federal law. So, we're just trying to raise that issue up, and that the point of this resolution is to communicate formally the concern we have around that. So, with that, are there any other questions or discussion related? I realize I was the sole member of the rental program committee left on the council, so I felt I needed to give some background. All right, seeing none. Ms. Browder, if you poll council?
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R-20-25 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next up, we have resolution R-21-2025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution number R-21-2025, a resolution commending Megan Sullivan Wisecup for her dedication and service to the city of Springdale. Whereas Megan Sullivan Wisecup has been a lifelong resident of Springdale. She was elected to the Springdale City Council in 2017 and has represented the residents as the district's lead council member from December 1, 2017 to November 30, 2025, and whereas Megan Sullivan Wisecup served on the Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals and the Springdale Parks and Recreation Committee from 2016 to 2019, and whereas Megan Sullivan Wisecup has served on the following boards, commissions, and committees while being a member of council: Public Utilities Committee, Public Relations Committee, Capital Improvements Committee, Rental Program Committee, Public Welfare and Safety Committee, and the Public Works Committee, and whereas over the years, Megan has participated in community endeavors such as the Springdale Youth Boosters, the Princeton City School District Youth Sports, and the Princeton City School Elementary and Middle School PTAAs, and whereas by said service, Megan Sullivan Wisecup has shown her interest in and dedication to making the city of Springdale a better place to live. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, that Megan Sullivan Wisecup is hereby given the commendation of the council of the city of Springdale for her outstanding and distinguished service to the city. Section two, that the clerk of council is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to Megan Sullivan Wisecup. Section three, this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R-21-2025. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? I know with our past meeting, going through it, when Megan was here, we had an opportunity to speak to her. This is an opportunity for the resolution from the new council to formally acknowledge that work as well. So, I appreciate that we still do this in addition to what we had before. And again, Megan, if you're watching, I know she had a medical procedure this morning, so couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to say thank you again for the work that you've done. All right, with that, Ms. Browder, if you poll council on resolution R-21-2025.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R-21-2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. Next, we have resolution R-22-2025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution number R-20-22, R-22-2025, a resolution commending Tom Vanover for his dedication and service to the city of Springdale. Whereas Tom Vanover has been a Springdale resident since 1982. Tom was elected to the Springdale City Council in 1993 and has represented residents as a District Four council member from December 1, 1993 to November 30, 2025, and whereas Tom Vanover has served as the president of council from 2013 to 2023, the vice president of council from 1999 to 2012, and on the following boards, commissions, and committees while being a member of council: Finance Committee, Rental Committee, Civil Service Review Board, Public Utilities Committee, Capital Improvements Committee, Rules and Laws Committee, Public Health, Safety, and Welfare Committee, Public Works Committee, Public Relations Committee, Board of Health, and Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, and whereas Tom Vanover served from 1991 to 1993 on the Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals, and whereas Tom Vanover, over the years, was active in coaching youth sports in Springdale. Whereas by said service, Tom Vanover has shown interest in and dedication to making the city of Springdale a better place to live. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring: section one, that Tom Vanover is hereby given the commendation of the council of the city of Springdale for his outstanding and distinguished service to the city. Section two, the clerk of council is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to Tom Vanover. Section three, this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R-22-2025.
Move to adopt.
What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Questions or discussion? And again, like the last meeting, we didn't in the past typically have the opportunity to thank outgoing council members, and it was always seemed difficult to have them vote on their own resolutions if we did it at the last meeting when they were here, for sure. So, again, this is an opportunity for council to say thank you to an outgoing council member who dedicated a large chunk of his life to the city, and we can say we appreciate it once again. So, with that, are there any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Browder, if you poll council?
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R-22-2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. And again, thank you, Mr. Vanover, who's in the audience, for your service to the city over the years. All right. Next on our agenda is resolution R-23-2025. As we've done in the past, where there's a blank in a resolution, before we reread the resolution for the first time, we'll go through the nomination process. How we do that, especially for the new people, is I'll open the floor for nominations. Simply call in with your light if you'd like to nominate a name to put into that position. I will call on those people. If there's more than one, we will have a roll call vote for which person would then be brought forward in the resolution. So, we will start the nomination process for this next one, which is for the Charter Revision Committee. And again, the floor is now open for nominations. Ms. Webster?
I would like, Michelle Miller would like to come back on Charter Revision Commission. I have her credentials, if you will, if you'd like me to read them. She's been on there a couple of years. Springdale, born and raised, and her husband, the same thing, raised her kids. She's very active with SOS, helps a great deal. She's on the board, and she does a lot. As a side note, we also coached her in soccer and softball, so we got a special feeling for her. Thank you.
All right, any other nominations for charter? Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Ray Horazika. Ray grew up in Wimbledon, it's across the street, graduated from Princeton High School, dedicated mom. She's served eight years in Ohio Army National Guard. She's coached U8 soccer team for past two years, and she's an active member of Springdale Elementary's PTA.
Any other nominations for charter revision? At this point, I'm closing the nominations. Since we have more than one name nominated, we'll need to go through a, not a roll call, but a one-by-one vote. How that'll work is Ms. Browder will poll individual by name. When your name is called, you simply need to state into the, into the mic whether you prefer Ms. Miller or Ms. Horazika. If it's easier for people on the dais, Michelle or Ray will also work, and we'll know what that means. All right, any questions about the process we're using before we go through the vote? All right, in that case, Ms. Browder, if you would go down the line and poll council?
Mr. Jacobs?
Horazika.
Mrs. Webster?
Michelle Miller.
Ms. McFarland?
Ray.
Mr. Hall?
Miller.
Mr. Gleaves?
Ray Horazika.
Ms. Thompson?
Ray.
Mr. Anderson?
Ms. Miller. All right, at a vote of four to three, Ray's name will be inserted into the resolution for charter revision. At this point, I'll turn it back to Mr. Jacobs, who would please read resolution R-23-25, 2025 with Ray's name inserted.
Resolution number 20, R-23-2025, a resolution appointing Raya Horazika to serve as a member of the city of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2030. Whereas a vacancy will occur on the city of Springdale Charter Revision Committee as a result of the expiration of the current member's term, which expires December 31, 2025, and whereas the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, has determined that Raya Horazika should be appointed to fill the vacancy and serve as a member of the city of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2030. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, with members elected thereto concurring: section one, that Raya Horazika be and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the city of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2030. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R-23-2025. What is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt.
All right, I heard Mr. Gleaves for the motion and Mr. Jacobs for the second. All right, as was moved in second, and we're now open for discussion. Ms. Webster?
Thank you. I would not vote for this woman for all the tea in China. About 13 months ago, she was trying to get me recalled for doing nothing but holding, talking about the chickens, and I will read what she wrote. We do need to do a recall. If no one else will do anything to help her, I don't need any help. I guess I will be starting one. It won't be until February. I figure I let the Websters enjoy the holidays and deal with one after this. I'll need time to finding a replacement. This council is so divided now. This just did nothing but make it worse. This, Michelle Miller, has been on that charter revision for two years. She doesn't know anything about the charter revision. This is very upsetting, very upsetting, and I will not be around somebody that wants to get me recalled for no reason, young lady. And don't get me wrong, this is her again. Don't get me wrong. She's a terrible person, and I don't feel bad for her. I'm reading what she wrote.
I know, if you'd just address your comments to the chair as opposed to the audience?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to. And don't get me wrong, she's a terrible person. I don't feel bad for her. This is karma, but I can't watch her embarrass herself any longer. The circus needs to end. You know, it's bad when I, of all people, actually feel sorry for her. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
I would like to add that, as in the past, when we've had multiple people nominated, I see it as a good thing, that there's a number of residents in the city that we feel are qualified and are willing to serve. It's always nice to have opportunities to bring in people, be it new or experienced. I know Ms. Miller, personally, I've worked with her on planning at BZA as well, and she's certainly been a good member of charter. I would hope that if the vote doesn't go towards, or the vote already didn't, but if, I hope that the city would find other ways to use her talents, because she is a benefit to the community as well. Ms. Webster, did you have another comment?
Yes. I would like to thank you for meeting with me Monday night. I informed our leader what I was going to do if her name was brought in for any committee, because of the way she was talking about me a year ago. And he told me, he would tell me if anybody was bringing her name in, and he did tonight. And I appreciate that, President Anderson, and thank you very much. And by the way, I'm going to request my seat be moved, because Megan Sullivan got her seat moved when she was upset with you, and I'd like to get mine moved, because I'm upset with him. Thank you.
All right, we'll deal with administrative matters later. We're still on the topic of resolution R-23-2025. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Ms. Browder, if you poll council?
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
No.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R-23-2025 passes with six affirmative votes. And welcome to charter revision. Now, on the, on the side, I think they had their annual meeting earlier tonight, and there might not be action until, for several months unless things have been resolved, as raised in the audience. I'm just making her aware, since we have that opportunity here tonight. Okay, next, we'll move on to resolution R-24-2025. Again, this is a position that will be nominated. This is for the Civil Service Commission, and just like with the last position, I'll open the floor for nominations. It's not necessary, it's not required to give background, but you're welcome to, as long as it's brief. If you would like to nominate someone for that, you simply use your call light. I'll call on you, and you can state the name that you want to bring forward. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations to, for resolution R-24, for the Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission. Second call for nominations? All right. So what we'll do, in the case where there's not a nomination available tonight, the chair is open to a motion to table Resolution R 242025 for our next meeting, which will give us an opportunity to seek out another member or check with the current member. So at this point, the chair is now, is open to a motion to table. Ms. McFarland?
I make a motion to table Resolution R 242025 to our next meeting.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. There's no discussion related to table, so at this point, Ms. Brattiff, you poll council on the motion to table R 242025.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution, the, the motion to table Resolution R 242025 passes with seven affirmative votes. We will see this on our agenda for the next meeting. Hopefully, we can take time between now and then to reach out to the committee members and see if we can find a qualified candidate for that. With that, I will also say, for anyone that's in the audience or watching, if you'd like the opportunity to serve on the commission, what you'd simply need to do is reach out to administration or any member of council, and they can bring your name forward. All right. Next, we'll move on. We have Resolution R 252025. This is for the Springdale Tax Review Board. Again, this is an open position that would require nomination. So like the previous two, I will open the floor for nominations, take names, and then, assuming we have one, we'll move forward from there. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations for the Tax Review Board. Second call? All right. At this point, I'm closing the nominations, and the chair is open for a motion to table Resolution R 252025. Mr. Jacobs?
I move that we table Resolution 20, R 252025. Second?
Moved and seconded. Ms. Brattiff, you poll council on the motion to table Resolution R 252025.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R 252025 has been tabled. We will see to it in our next meeting. And again, just like the last one, hopefully, between now and our next meeting, we'll have an opportunity to reach out to members from the community, and if anyone in the community would like to serve on the Springdale Tax Review Board, this is an opportunity, simply reach out to a council member that you're comfortable speaking with. All right. Next up, we have Resolution R 262025. Again, it's an open nomination. Like before, I will open the floor for nominations, go through the naming process, and then we'll resolve the resolution from there. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations for R 262025, which is for the Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Jacobs?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Gilmore for the seat on Board of Zoning Appeals.
The floor is still open, if anyone else would like to nominate? All right. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor for nominations, and then by acclamation, we will read Resolution R 262025. Sorry, we should, we should run that. All those in favor of including the name Michelle Gilmore, the current seated member, to Resolution R 262025 for the reading, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We will, then by, by acquiescence, oh, I used the wrong word.
Acclamation.
By acclamation, thank you. By acclamation, Michelle Gilmore's name will be inserted into Resolution R 26. Mr. Jacobs?
Resolution R 262025, a resolution appointing Michelle Gilmore to serve as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending November 30, 2029. Whereas a vacancy will occur on the City of Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals as a result of the expiration of a current member's term, which expires November 30, 2025, and whereas the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, has determined that Michelle Gilmore shall be appointed to fill the vacancy and serve as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending November 30, 2029. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that Michelle Gilmore be and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending November 30, 2029. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of Resolution R 262025. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? I will say that Ms. Gilmore did reach out to me and did indicate that she did want to return. She's been a valuable member of Board of Zoning Appeals. In addition to the Board of Zoning Appeals, she also serves on the Zoning Code Revision Board, representing that group, which I think makes her uniquely qualified to continue. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Brattiff, you poll council.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R 262025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right. That's the end of ordinances and resolutions. Next, we'll move on to old business. Is there any old business anyone on council would like to bring forward this evening? All right, seeing none. Next, we have new business. There's a number of items that are on the agenda for new business. They're all related to council committee appointments. This might feel like a new process to some. As we continue to update our processes, in the past, a number of these committees would simply be appointed by fiat, but in further looking at what's required by the city, a number of these require council's consent. So, council, I passed out my recommendations for these council committee appointments, but we will go through a nominating process for each position, as is your right to speak. So you will have an opportunity for each seat to nominate somebody else if you would like. I do want to remind you that these are council committees only, so the only names that are valid for these positions are council members, current council members. All right? So, we will go down the list. The first one is the America 250 Committee. This is the committee that was formed or approved by our previous council to work as part of Springdale being in America 250 community. The responsibilities for the committee are especially around working with administration and the public to determine the types of activities we want to do to celebrate our nation's 250 anniversary. There's two positions that are available. The first is chair, and the second is member. We will start with chairperson, and with that, I will open the floor for nominations. Mr. Jacobs?
I'd like to nominate Levon Webster as chairperson of the America 250 Committee.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of approving Ms. Webster as the chairperson for America 250 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Webster, welcome to the chair of the America 250 Committee.
Thank you.
We hope for great things.
Yes.
All right. Next on that is member for America 250 Committee. Again, the floor is open for nominations. Mr. Jacobs?
I'd like to nominate Dan Jacobs to serve on the committee as a member.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Then, I'm closing nominations for member, and then by voice vote, all those in favor of approving Dan Jacobs for a member to the America 250 Committee signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Then by acclamation, Dan Jacobs is appointed as a member of the America 250 Committee. Welcome to the committee, Mr. Jacobs. Okay. Next on the list is Planning Commission. Again, we will go through the nomination process. The floor is now open for nominations for the, the council representative of Planning Commission. Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Dan Jacobs for Planning Commission.
All right. Any other nominations? At this point, I'm closing nominations. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of approving Dan Jacobs as our council appointment to Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Then by acclamation, Mr. Jacobs is going to Plan Commission. Again, it's a, it's a busy commission. We hope for great things. All right. Next, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, the nomination, the floor is open for nominations for council member appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Jacobs?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Tom Hall.
All right. Seeing no other nominations, I'm closing nominations. All those in favor of approving Mr. Hall's appointment to the Board of Zone Appeals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Mr. Hall, welcome to the Board of Zone Appeals again.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know you're returning. This is a different seat, though, so before you were a mayor appointment, I believe, but now you return as a council appointment. So I think they might make you change seats when you go to the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next, we'll move on to the OKI Board Representative. Again, the floor is open for nominations. Mr. Jacobs?
I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Anderson for the OKI Board Representative.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Then by acclamation, all those in, I'm closing nominations, all those in favor of approving my name to the OKI Board of Representatives signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? By acclamation, I am reappointed to the Board, OKI Board of Representatives, and thank you. I still like infrastructure, so I appreciate the opportunity, even though I'm in this seat facilitating, to be able to go to those meetings. I find it strangely affirming. All right. Next, we'll move on to the Springdale CRA Housing Council. There's two member positions available for this. For those that aren't aware, the CRA Housing Council was formed as a bridge for the Rose Development, the Homer Amma Development that went on Kemper Road. It was required as a part of that process. The board still exists, although it's largely dormant, since they formed their own HOA, but we still have a responsibility to appoint members in the event that we do have to take action. There are two council seats for that. They're both members. So at this point, I'm opening the floor for nominations for the first member to the Springdale CRA Housing Council. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Levon Webster to serve on the Springdale CRA Housing Council.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. I'm closing nominations for that member position. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Webster to the CRA Housing Council as a member signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Then by acclamation, Ms. Webster has joined the CRA Housing Council as a member. There's a second seat. I'm now opening the floor for nominations for the second member position. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Anderson to serve on the Springdale CRA Housing Council.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. I'm closing nominations. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of approving Mr. Anderson, myself, as a member of the CRA Housing Council signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? And by acclamation, I am returning as a member of the CRA Housing Council. All right. We're almost through these. Next up, we have the Civil Service Review Board. Please note, this is the Civil Service Review Board, not the Civil Service Commission that Mr. Robert, I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman chairs. This is an escalation point that I don't believe has met in a number of years, but we still have a responsibility to staff it, and it does require council appointment. So, there's a both chairperson and member available. Again, I'm opening the floor for nominations for the chairperson for the Civil Service Review Board. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Michelle McFarland as the chairperson for the Civil Service Review Board.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. I'm now closing nominations for the chairperson for the Civil Service Review Board. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of approving Ms. McFarland as the chairperson signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. By acclamation, Ms. McFarland has been appointed as the chairperson for the Civil Service Review Board. Welcome. All right. There's also a member position for the Civil Service Review Board. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to put forth my name as a member of the Civil Service Review Board.
Any other nominations? All right. Seeing none. I'm closing nominations for the Civil Service Review Board member position. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Jacobs to the Civil Service Review Board as a member signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. By acclamation, Mr. Jacobs is appointed as a member of the Civil Service Review Board. All right. And then the last one, again, this is for the Volunteer Firefighter Dependents Board. There's two member seats that are appointed by council. Once the board meets, they do appoint a resident member to be determined later, and there's also representation from the fire department that will be there. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations for the first member position to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependents Board. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to put forth Councilmember Tom Hall's name for the Volunteer Firefighters Dependents Board.
Any other nominations? All right. At this point, I'm closing nominations for the first member position for the Volunteer Firefighters Dependents Board. Then by acclamation, Mr. Hall, all those in favor of approving Mr. Hall as our first appointment to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependents Board signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Then by acclamation, Mr. Hall is our first appointment to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependents Board. Welcome, Mr. Hall. All right. All right, the second position, the floor is now open for nominations. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Council Member David Gleaves to serve on the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Board.
Any other nominations? All right, say none. I'm closing nominations. Then by acclamation, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Gleaves to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Board signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Then by acclamation, Mr. Gleaves is our second appointment as member to the Volunteer Firefighter Dependence Board. And with that, my impersonation of an auctioneer has ended. Thank you for sitting with me as we went through all those nominations. I might need a drink of water, and I have newfound respect for Mr. Jacobs as he reads the legislation. I don't know how he does it. Okay, any other new business anyone on council would like to bring forward this evening? Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was something that came to my attention on Monday, and I wasn't even really thinking about till we were going through these. And this was something that we hadn't addressed, and so I don't know that it's something that has to be voted on necessarily. I don't know if it's something that's a decision of the president of council versus an administrative role, but we have a seat on the ICRC board, and so it's not been something, obviously, we voted on previously, but, and just checking with Mr. Braun in terms of a question of being a council president appointment versus an administrative appointment or mayor appointment, I wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. With that, I would, if it's something council wants to take up, it's something that Mr. Vanover had done for a number of years. I know they have some board meetings that are coming up that he served on. Obviously, it's not something that reports out, but it's important to have a stake with regard to ICRC. They are very important to us and very important in the region with other municipalities. In speaking with the executive director, it's my understanding, I didn't speak with him, but it's my understanding that the person does not have to be an elected official. So I would suggest to council, again, being, we'll see whose prerogative it is, but I think Mr. Vanover would be willing to serve if council would be so inclined. If there's an acquiescence from council, and I obviously, whether it's mayor or the president of council's decision, I would be fine with it, but I wanted to raise that issue. Whether it's something that's addressed tonight or it's addressed later, it's something that needs to be taken care of. It's important we maintain that seat. Thank you.
That's good to know. Why don't we give it some thought? If anyone on council has thoughts about it, we'll make sure we find out whose appointment it is, just so we follow the process the right way, and we'll come back. Whichever we determine, if you have thoughts on who it should be, go ahead and send them to Laura, to myself in the meanwhile, certainly before our next council meeting, and then we can share at our next meeting what we'll end up doing with that or what happened. Ms. McFarland?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I think it would be great if Mr. Vanover wanted to continue. Is that something he's interested in? Just if that comes to it? Okay. Thank you.
So for those that can't see the same things we see, Mr. Vanover sat in the audience and was nodding his head. I believe in the affirmative. If that's not right, I hope he speaks up later and lets me know that I misread that. So, just so we have that piece of information, thank you. All right. Any other new business? All right, say none. Meetings and announcements. Ms. McFarland?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Commission meeting for December 9th has been canceled, and in addition, the Board of Health meeting will be held on December 11th in these chambers, beginning at 6:30.
Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. Because of the holiday, Christmas coming up, the Board of Zone Appeals has a meeting scheduled to 16th at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers. And also, before that, the zoning code revision is going to start back up at 2:30 p.m. December 8th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick things. One, Council Member Hall has a couple of family members present, and son and grandson, so want to recognize them, and thanks for coming out and get to see Dad and Grandpa on the day as per his first meeting. Also, this Saturday, we have the Santa 5K in Venders Village. 9 o'clock, there'll be food truck there and coffee carts and all kinds of fun stuff. You can get out and run a 5K and go do some holiday shopping as well, and benefits and proceeds for SOS with regard to that. We also have, next Monday, we got snowed out for our tree lighting, so next Monday, the 8th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the municipal building, we'll have our tree lighting, and I have to say, lots of compliments. I already told Kevin, but to all the men and women of Public Works, folks have really liked the decorations that they've put up so far. So, we'll have that coming up. And I also want to make sure folks are aware, and our condolences go out. Longtime Board of Health member and longtime Princeton High School nurse, Rita Hart's husband, Bob Hart, passed away here recently, and so thoughts and prayers go out to her. Thank you.
Mr. Yul?
Thank you, Mr. President. Civil Service Commission will meet tomorrow, Thursday, December 4th, at 2:00 p.m. in the council chambers, I'm sorry, council conference room. And also, the Finance Committee will be meeting next Wednesday, December 10th, at 2:30 p.m. in the council conference room to discuss the budget.
Don't see any more lights? Next, we'll move on to communications from the audience. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council, this is your second and final opportunity this evening to do so. Simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you can address council after five minutes. The floor is now open for communications from the audience.
Tom Vanover, 11982 Tavel Court. Little history on the ICRC. That has, I served on it many years ago when I started, and then it reached a point that Derek Parham took over and served. I have been in contact with Jason Dudley, just to let him know, you know, with the election come through, that, wasn't sure how, but he had reaffirmed and confirmed that it does not have to be an elected official. We do retain a board seat on that board, so with that, it's your call. Secondly, I would like to wish this council the very best. I have nothing but respect and pleasure that I had the opportunity, and really not opportunity, the privilege, to serve. That seat that I occupied was not mine. There were people ahead of me, and there will be people behind me, but it was a privilege. It was not a trophy or a prize to be held. And with that comes much responsibility. It has been disheartening, this last election cycle was probably the most vitriol and vicious and retaliatory that I have ever seen, and I hope that changes. There were a lot of personal attacks and a lot of lies, and that's disheartening because the city doesn't deserve that type of operation. I guess I have another accolade that was bestowed upon me by fellow council members, and that being most hated man on city council. And that hurt. That hurt. I have treated everybody up there with the utmost professionalism or respect, so I will hold my head up. I know who appreciated the service. I know what the job that I did, and I take that with me. I do forgive you. That's in my thing, and I'm reminded of Mark 832. What is it, profit of man if he gains the world but he loses his soul? So I hope and pray for all of you that you maintain your soul, because after this is all done, that's all you've got left.
The floor is still open if anyone else would like to address council for any reason? Second call? Third and final call? At this point, I'm closing communications to the audience. Move on to recap of legislative items and legislations still in development. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, as you review your legislative summary, item one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Plattenburg &amp; Associates Incorporated for Professional Accounting Services for the audit of the City of Springdale for the years ending 2025 through 2029, was addressed by ordinance 472025, receiving a first reading. Item two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract with Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of snow and ice control rock salt and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance 482025 with an emergency clause, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item three was addressed, or item three, an ordinance amending ordinance number 692025 to provide for wage increases for certain city employees and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance 492025, receiving a first reading. Item four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Springdale Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 4027, was addressed by ordinance 502025, receiving a first reading. Item five, a resolution of the City of Springdale, Ohio, supporting action to be taken by the Ohio Legislature to address and limit the over occupancy in single-family zone neighborhoods and removing regulations preventing the enforcement of local zoning code for owner-occupied and commercially managed rental homes, was addressed by Resolution R. 2025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item six, two resolutions recognizing Megan Sullivan Weiscup and Tom Vanover for their years of service to the City of Springdale, were addressed by Resolutions R. 21 and R. 222025, both receiving seven affirmative votes. Item seven was addressed with several resolutions, including R. 232025, a nomination to the Charter